Good evening, everybody. Good evening, councillors. Good evening to all those watching us live on Facebook. And welcome to our virtual meeting of Dorlish Town Council. Thank you to all of those of you who have joined the meeting this evening and watching live elsewhere. To ensure that this meeting runs as smoothly as possible, all participants will be muted by the town clerk and can only be unmuted by the town clerk on my instruction. Those councillors wishing to speak should either raise their hand or if you click on...
Oh, chairman, I think you've muted for some reason. There we go.
Right, thank you. So, if you raise the virtual hand, the town clerk will then assist me with the order of debate as we consider tonight's agenda items. However, please bear in mind that I can't see the order of the hands going up, so please be patient. Thank you. I'm sure that this will not be the case this evening, but should there be any disruptions to the meeting, the individual will be warned once by myself and if a disruption continues, I will ask the town clerk to remove them from the meeting. Those being removed will not be permitted to re-enter. Virtual meetings will be recorded and livestreamed, and therefore, should you not wish for your image to be recorded, please turn your camera off now. I'd now like to begin the meeting, starting with number six on the four information page about the recording of the meeting. So, as I've just said, recording this meeting, it is being recorded. Public participation. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to address councillors present at this meeting regarding items on the agenda at the discretion of me, the chair. Members of the public will also be given an opportunity to discuss town council activities not on the current agenda after the close of the meeting. The comments of members of the public and electors of the parish who speak before the start of the meeting or following the close of the meeting will not form part of the minutes of the meeting. Okay, so turning over. Can I just ask, are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this meeting? Who wish to ask any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, turning over then on to page three. I'll ask the town clerk, do we have any apologies for absence, please?
Just an apology from councillor James, chairman.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we all accept that apology. Thank you. Agreements of the agenda between parts one and part two. So, this evening, we do have a part two, at which point I will ask the members of the public and the press to leave. So, do we have any other questions? Can we agree the agenda parts one and two? Okay, thank you. So, declarations of interest. To declare any disclosible interests relating to forthcoming items of business, if there are any, have any been offered for this evening? Please raise your hand if you have any. Okay, thank you. Moving on. Item number four then, dispensations, to receive and consider requests for dispensations if there are any.
None received, chairman.
Thank you. Okay then, so minutes, which you will see in your pack pages seven to 10, to approve, sign and adopt the minutes of the town council meeting, which was held on the 3rd of August 2020. Welcome councillor Woods, thank you for joining us. So, do I have approval from councillors here to adopt the minutes of that meeting? Please raise your hand if you adopt them, approve of them. Okay, thank you. Can I just ask councillor Dawson if you could say if you approve, please?
Chairman, I can't see councillor Dawson is in the meeting currently.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so we've voted to adopt those meeting, those minutes of that meeting. Okay, thank you. Moving on then, item number six, minutes of the committees for adoption. So, first of all, to receive the minutes of the civic communities committee meeting, which was held on the 18th of March. Councillor Morehood, please.
Yes, madam mayor, I would like to put forward the minutes of the civic communities meeting, 18th of March, for adoption, please.
Thank you. And do I have a second for that? Please raise a hand. Thank you. Do we all adopt those, approve of those? Thank you. Perfect. Moving on then, to adopt the minutes of the finance and general purposes committee held on the 27th of February. Can I have the chair of that meeting to put those forward, please? Councillor Wiggly.
I'd like to put forward the minutes of the meeting of the finance general purposes committee on the 27th of February, which feels like an awfully long time ago, to the council for adoption, please.
Thank you. And can I have a second for that, please? Thank you. All in favour? Perfect, thank you. And then to have to approve for adoption the minutes of the planning committees held on the 18th of June, the 9th of July and the 30th of July for adoption, please. Can I ask the chair, councillor Goodman Fabry?
Madam mayor, I'd like to present the meeting, planning meeting minutes for the 18th of June, the 9th of July and the 30th of July this year for adoption and acceptance by the committee, please.
Thank you. And can I have a second? Thank you councillor Taylor. All in favour, please? Please raise a hand. Perfect, thank you. Item number seven then, the town clerk's report, please. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, chairman. The 3rd of 1st of August was the deadline for town and parish councils submitting their AIGAR documentation, which we did back in late June, early July, so we should now be hearing any day from the external auditors on their report on our finances for the last financial year. So, that will get brought to members' attention once we've received it. The 23rd of September is the website accessibility compliance deadline, and we're making good progress with our new website. We're currently writing the content for the pages and adding images and various things, so that's all on schedule to be in place by the 23rd of September. If you hadn't noticed, today's meeting's agenda pack has been crafted by ModernGov, our committee management software. We're still going through the system and getting everything in place, which should go live in conjunction with the new website, but hopefully it's going to make huge efficiency savings for us, so we're looking forward to using that more fully. We've also received a certificate of grateful recognition from the VJ Day 75 Committee for the council taking part in the commemorations, and we've got the certificate in the office. And the drive-in cinema event that's taking place on Friday and Saturday and a drive-in church service on Sunday still has tickets available at £10 a ticket per car. We've got some great films being shown. We've got Moana, Toy Story 4, Bohemian Rhapsody, Rocketman and Downton Abbey. So, if anybody would like a ticket, or you know of anybody that would like a ticket, then get in touch with the town council or visit our website and Facebook pages for links to purchase those tickets online. We can do it over the phone, provided the person gives us the okay to do it for them and take a car payment, but we'd be more than happy to do that. So, tickets available and hopefully it will be a really good, successful event. Our first foray into the drive-in cinema world, so if anything, it's been a good learning experience so far. And that's all from me, chairman.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you. And now we come on to my report.
Oh, chairman, I believe councillor Wiggly has a question.
Sorry councillor Wiggly, please go ahead.
Thank you. It's more of a, I've just had a message from councillor Dawson.
I'm just reading it now.
Trying to get back into the meeting because there was a confusion. I think she was labelled as councillor Woods for some odd reason at the beginning. And having been expelled, having been taken out of the meeting, she's having difficulty getting back into the meeting.
Yeah, I will try and get her back in and work in the background quietly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, now we go on to my report. My report has been circulated, you will have all have seen that, but I would just like to add that I was honoured to attend the BJ anniversary day. I was honoured to attend that on the 15th of August. Last week, I was very sad to hear that the last house of the railway convalescent homes charity, Bridge House, was closing. For over 100 years, they've been welcoming guests for convalescence and hospitality here in Dorish, and I feel very lucky to have, at my point of need, stayed there for a couple of weeks, so I've experienced the wonderful hospitality there. And I'd just like to wish all the staff there the very best for the future, and I hope that a viable future can be found for Bridge House. And then this last weekend, I'd like to thank the projects officer, Angie, weatherhead, for organising that excellent entertainment on the lawn with the Punch and Judy and the Flea Circle. It was very, the Flea Circus, sorry, I'm garbling my words. It was very well attended on both Sunday and bank holiday Monday with people social distancing on the lawn, and it was a very good day, very good entertainment. So, thank you. I can see two hands have been raised. I think councillor Lowther had a hand raised, and councillor Powers. Councillor Lowther, please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. I just wanted to support your sorrow over the loss of Bridge House. It is a great loss to Dorish. I remember that when I was mayor, I don't know, whenever it was, 11, 12, something like that, I met Prince of Hand there to bless and enlarge themselves on these small things. And it seemed particularly sad that so soon after, we're losing it. A great loss, and I'm sorry to hear this going. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lowther. Councillor Powers, please go ahead.
And I just agree with you, Terry. I was also privileged on that particular day, so it is very sad. I was just going to make a comment on BJ Day. I feel that, for whatever reason, Covid and whatever, it wasn't given quite as much prominence as it should have been. It was the end of the war. There were many, many people out there, including my brother-in-law, who fought in Burma, and I just felt that it was lovely to be round the war memorial with those of us who could make it, but I felt from the comments I heard afterwards, that a lot of people just didn't realise it was that particular day or how important it was.
Thank you councillor Powers. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to item nine on the next page, county councillors' reports. So, a report has been circulated by councillor Catworthy. He isn't present at the meeting this evening. Do any councillors wish to make any comments about that? You will have all seen it, it's been circulated. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Heath has a question.
Sorry councillor Heath, I didn't see your hand. Please go ahead.
It may not be appropriate at this moment, if not, I'll stop and come back at the end, but I did have a conversation with councillor Catworthy today about the car crash. Now, I don't know whether it's on his report, because it obviously won't, because this has happened yesterday. Are most of us aware about the crash on the 379 on the hill? Anyway, basically, we're not sure what the cause of it was, but it was pretty bad. And councillor Malvad also, when we went on our walk, we were going to add, put slow signs on the road, and I was talking to him, he said he's going to put that forward to the officer so that we have down that hill, slow signs, because it's very unusual, but a very dangerous bend, which cars go too fast, it's too narrow and too big vehicles come. It's not a bend sign, it's not a slow sign, so hopefully he will get that approved, but he's gave me permission to mention it as he is not going to be here, but hopefully that will be okay.
Thank you very much councillor Heath for raising that, and I will take those, I will make a note of those points and we'll try to ensure that we push that forward. Thank you. Okay, so then moving on to district councillors' reports. Do our district councillors wish to speak? I know we've had the report already circulated by councillor Linda Pedric, thank you. Do any other district councillors wish to speak? Go ahead, please councillor Wiggly.
Thank you. I just want to briefly touch on a few points, because it is an unusual time, and Team Bridge is facing an awful lot of difficulties in terms of recovery. I think we're all familiar with the money aspect, but my particular responsibility at Team Bridge involves housing, and I just wanted to cover housing a little bit. You'll all be aware that we achieve affordable housing, or so-called affordable housing, through section 106 agreements, when developers are building houses and they build affordable houses along with the big estates that they're building. In the first three months of this year, we will have received virtually none, because obviously all the building has stopped. That doesn't mean that people don't need more affordable houses. We are not anticipating that we're going to manage to catch up a whole quarter's delivery in the next part of the year. We are looking at all sorts of problems of reducing the numbers that we're getting across Team Bridge. When you look at that and you combine that with the amount of redundancies that we're seeing, and the amount of financial difficulties that we're seeing people in across the patch, we are a little concerned, and there is a potential for problems with housing, for problems with finances for people in Dorish. When you add on to that, that whilst there's been a rental evictions holiday, in other words, nobody can be thrown out of their rented house, that comes to an end at the end of this month. Happily, it's been extended by a month, because had it been at the end of last month, we would have seen a range of people homeless at Christmas time, because that's when the process would have worked through. So, what with that coming to an end, with furlough coming to an end, with a lack of delivery of new affordable housing, and then you add on top of that the changes in planning permission, so there are new permitted development rights that allow people to change use of shops to houses, which is good. It also allows people to put second floors, third floors, two extra floors in fact, onto many types of housing, just under permitted development. But the new zonal planning scheme that is being proposed by the government at the moment, and there's a consultation going on, removes many of the smaller sites from the need to deliver affordable housing. It has a suggestion that less than 50 houses will not actually have any affordable housing attached to it. So, we are looking at the delivery of homes, the delivery of affordable homes across the patch, and how we can make things better, deliver more, actually do things to help, along with an emphasis on what Team Bridge can do to help in terms of the economy and help in terms of delivering jobs. We have a busy time at Team Bridge ahead, and there will be things that we will be asking to work with the town councils to do, and working in cooperation is going to be so much more necessary to actually help us build a recovery, which is what our next task is going to be. Slightly somber, but I just wanted to make people aware that we have some difficult times ahead, and we have to play our part in doing what we can to actually help build that recovery and make Dorish better. But thank you.
Thank you councillor Wiggly. Thank you for that. Any other reports? Yes councillor Taylor, please go ahead. Do you want to?
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, just to respond, if you like, also to what councillor Wiggly has just been talking about, particularly with regard to affordable housing. Yes, there's been a government white paper, Planning for the Future. It's been because of August holidays, I've yet to be briefed by officers what it may mean. There's a lot of, it's a quite comprehensive document, it's effectively turning, planning upside down really. Build, build, build seems to be the order of the day, but there's nothing that the building industry hates more is where we've got, where we don't know what, where it's not known what the way forward is. They don't like, they don't like that, and I'm wondering whether actually, because of this hiatus that we may have in planning, that actually things might slow down a bit. Certainly in terms of the affordable housing sites, the 40 to 50 home sites where perhaps planning permission had already been given and that building was expected to proceed and to deliver affordable housing, we may see new applications coming forward now with no affordable housing in those, and that will have an effect of stopping housing altogether on those sites. So, it's difficult, difficult times certainly for planning and for construction, although there does seem to be on the ground a bit of a mini boom going on. I think that's probably as much to do with getting completions ahead of any changes as it is catching up on the time lost this spring. So, there are three pillars within this white paper. Planning for development, planning for beautiful and sustainable places, planning for infrastructure and connected places. There are some good points to, you know, that are applauded. It's understood that the cost of operating this new system is to fall to landowners and developers and not the taxpayer. Well, that would be nice if that happens, as would perhaps fixed costs or land. But also, what communities may lose is the community infrastructure levy, which is currently accruing to many of the new houses that are being built, also section 106, both section 106 and SIL are proposed to be abolished and for an infrastructure levy to be taken forward instead, which will include for roads, for hospitals, for elderly health care, as I understand it. So, it is a very wide-ranging white paper. I've yet to have a sit-down or Zoom meeting with officers, hope to bring all of that forward to the planning, to the town council meeting in October, and the date for the consultation ends on this, on the 29th of October. So, the October meeting, I'll have a much fuller report on the white paper and what it may mean for us as a town council. I think we might be expected to have more of the same or work to do, and paperwork of course, but there we are, all part of the fun. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Thank you for your reports. Councillor Morehood, did I see your hand was raised earlier? Were you going to, or do you, do any other district councillors wish to make reports? Or did you have a question councillor Morehood?
Yes, I just wanted to ask councillors Taylor and Wiggly whether they think that developers are going to make more haste now to develop land they're sitting on, in view of the fact that just this morning, it was on the national media, a report that house prices have risen, I think by 2%, very recently, for unfathomable reasons, but although we'd be getting fewer of so-called affordable housing, and it's very depressing, but I'm just hoping that that might mitigate some of it. I just wonder what you thought.
Thank you councillor Morehood. Do councillor Wiggly or councillor Taylor wish to reply to that? Please go ahead councillor Taylor.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, madam mayor. I think councillor Wiggly actually did have his hand up before I did, so I hope, but I hope you won't mind.
I can't see the order.
Okay, but I hope I'm, we may be wanting to say pretty much the same things, but in turn, it is surprising that the Nationwide have announced that house prices have gone up. That may be because there's fewer houses on the market. I think a lot of people aren't showing, wanted to show people their houses at the moment. It may be a blip, maybe, maybe not, so I think we'll just have to wait and see, but from my point, as I said earlier, my concern is that the changes are so wide-ranging that there may be a hiccup in the housing market. I hope there isn't, I hope we can continue to build, and I hope we can continue to build the right sort of houses for those people who, especially for those people who need them the most, you know, our sons and daughters, you know, they all, everyone deserves to have a nice place to live, and, you know, I'd hope we can continue to build those sort of houses here.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Wiggly?
Yes, and thank you councillor Taylor, and thank you chair. Just to add to that, yes, there has certainly been a flurry. I've heard of people whose houses have sold within hours of them deciding to sell it before it even gets to the estate agent. And I think there has been a rush of people trying to get the houses that have been available. I think there's been pent-up demand for those people who have been desperate to move, and for those houses that were prevented in their completions in the early days. It is slightly concerning that you also read reports, I think it was The Telegraph today was saying government was predicting a 16% drop in house prices later in the year. So, I think we are seeing a market that is in turmoil. I think it's unusual situation. If you stop a flow, if you dam a river and then you remove the dam, you'll get an immediate rush, but you're not sure after that immediate tidal wave whether you then get a continuation or a drought or what. So, I mean, it's going to be confusing for a while and things will move, but the prospect of the economic situation would point to a reduction in a slightly longer term, but it's impossible to guess, impossible to know, and time will tell. We've got to be prepared either way.
Thank you councillor Pedric. Please go ahead.
I think what we've got to remember is that the reason that the property market is moving so much at the moment is the break in stamp duty. People have moved a lot because they're taking advantage of the stamp duty break. My daughter's looking at a new house because they're thinking about the same thing. So, the movement in the market at the moment has been largely down to the break in stamp duty, I think.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other district councillors' reports? Okay, so we'll go on to town councillors' reports. We've had the report circulated. Thank you councillor Morehood for your report. Do any councillors wish to raise any points? Please raise a hand if you'd like to. Councillor Powers, please go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that how many compliments I've had about the railway and right along the railway this summer. People who I'm quite certain have never walked it before have been walking it, and now looking forward to the next stage. I just would like to... I just would like to thank Network Rail for their presentation and all the work they've done so far. And certainly, I think the seafront looks really nice.
Thank you, councillor Powers. Thank you. Any other councillors wish to make reports or anything? Okay. Councillor Mayne, please go ahead.
I'm not making a report. I just want to ask, and I suppose this must be the best time to ask it. When will we be able to get our meetings back in the chambers? I don't like these Zoom meetings. And that's a question for Andrew really, but I thought it's the only time to bring it in.
Okay, thank you councillor Mayne. Andrew, please.
Yeah, chairman, the government guidance is clear at the moment that where you're able to meet remotely or you have the means to meet remotely, you should continue to do so unless there are absolutely no alternative methods to be able to meet. And as we can meet remotely, then we shouldn't be meeting in person. Now, I know that does sort of fly against the fact that other groups could meet in the manor house. And you can have groups meeting in different situations, but as it stands, the regulations and the government guidance is clear that council meetings should not be meeting in person as they have alternative means to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, thank you. So if there aren't any other councillors wishing to speak, then we'll move on to the next item, which is item number 12, Local Government Services Pay Agreement 2020-2021. And this is to note that the Local Government Services Pay Agreement has been reached between the national employers and the NGJC Trade Union. Andrew, do you wish to make any comments?
Chairman, there's nothing much more to say other than what's printed in the agenda. It's something that takes place every year for a number of years. From 2010, it was a zero increase for a few years, then it was capped at 1% for a few years. This has now been put in by the national employers and the trade unions and a compromise has been reached, 2.75, and that's now been accepted by the majority of the trade unions that are involved. Therefore, it's backdated to the 1st of April, which is the start of tax year. And also the increased annual leave entitlement is also commensurate from the 1st of April.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's good. So it's on the agenda that we note that. Councillor Powers, I can see you've got your hand raised. Please go ahead.
I was just going to propose as chairman of staffing that we note this report, and I'm sure somebody will second me.
Thank you.
Quite a few.
Quite a few are happy to second you. So can I ask for a vote in favour of that? Please raise your hand. Excellent. Okay, thank you. Moving on then to item number 13, the draft review of the Statement of Licensing Policy, which has been circulated, the papers have, pages 19 and 20 in your packs, to consider whether the town council wishes to submit representations as part of the review being undertaken by the district council. And the full Statement of Licensing Policy can be viewed online. Do any councillors or our district councillors wish to make any comments on that, please?
Councillor Wrigley, chairman?
Oh, councillor Wrigley, please go ahead.
I... Thank you, Chair. It's a little bit difficult. I haven't managed to sit down with the old and the new to see what has changed in the policy. But I don't think in my scanning through that it actually helped us in the much-needed review that we actually need here. So I would like to suggest that we do put something forward as a town council. So we have one particular issue that comes up time and again, which is to do with a persistent late licence, which doesn't seem to come up for review, and it seems to be a permanent late licence for an establishment that is causing issues in the town. So I would like to see the licensing policy, actually see what we can do about reviewing such late licences to see if they are problematic, which I think ours can be at times.
Thank you, councillor Wrigley. Thank you. I'm happy to support that and second your proposal. Do any other councillors wish to make any comments? Councillor Morehead, please. And then councillor Terry Lather. Councillor Morehead first.
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, I looked through it. I can't say I digested it. It is quite complicated. But I didn't see anywhere where there's any reference to truly local input. And I suspect that's what's being referred to previously by councillor Wrigley. I think every community has maybe problems of one kind or another due to different kinds of licensing, because this isn't just to do with alcoholism, it's to do with all kinds of licensing. And I'd be happy if someone could correct me and say that there is somewhere where any particular community can make a specific request. I'd like to see something in there that allows that, if it isn't already there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morehead. I'll go to councillor Terry Lather first. Would you go ahead, please?
Okay, well, maybe a general observation to start with. As an old, everyone says in the world, licensing magistrate. I'm sorry to see it come out to the courts and go to local authorities, to be honest, because it's become much more complicated and much more distant, and I support councillor Morehead's remarks on that. We all know the problems with one or two hostels in the town. I think that's already been subject to review. I have a feeling that the decision has already been made underneath these regulations, but I might be wrong. It's always worth looking again. I do feel that we ought to have more local input into regulations. There's a sort of general nod towards being nice to the neighbours, but in fact is rarely given very serious consideration because what happens in Dawlish is going on somewhere in Hollis and whatever. And so there's already precedent and so it's hardly considered. I'd like to... Yes, I agree with that. We should make a representation. And I think we should be looking at more local input into decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lather. Any other comments? Please, councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Raises a little bit of a question here. I'm slightly puzzled, so perhaps somebody could help me. At the present moment, who is the licensing authority, say for a local public house? Is it Teinbridge?
Yes.
Or it is? It's not Devon County?
No.
Right. Well, I'd be grateful if perhaps on the next meeting they could come back and be as the responsible person and give us more clarity on this so that we can easily raise questions. Because it looks as if quite a few of us have got slight issues and yet we seem to be not quite sure how we can raise the query. So if there's a particular officer at Teinbridge that deals with it or what, so that we can be clear, all of us know who to actually contact.
Thank you, councillor Heath. I see that they're asking for comments to be made on their website to this consultation by the 16th of October. But maybe one of our district councillors might know who it is at Teinbridge District Council or any other comments?
Yeah, it'd be helpful.
So, Chair, can I just ask councillor Heath to repeat his request? I understand having somebody come and talk to us, was that the premise of your question?
Not so much that. If we've got a query, say a person in the area comes and says it's their councillor, I need something done about this, I personally don't know who I would contact. Would it be you? Would it be one of our district councillors? Would I go direct? There's a little bit of fuzziness, which I just think perhaps I need some training, which I'm happy to do. But I don't actually know who I would contact. And that would just be, and I think that could be the feeling of a few of us, not all of us. Some of us are long in the tooth and know exactly what to do. But I would just like the clarity. If there is a discussion, we now know it's Teinbridge, and how do we put forward a problem?
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, Chair, I think councillor Heath, you've got one of three ways of going about it. You can either approach one of the district councillors to take the matter forward on your behalf. You can either contact myself to get in touch with the responsible person at Teinbridge. Or you can contact the licensing department direct. Their email address is licensing@teinbridge.gov.uk. Their licensing manager, Andrea Furness, is an authority on licensing matters. And she'd be very amenable to helping any situation that may arise that you're aware of. So those would be your three options.
Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you, councillor Heath. Thank you, Andrew. Councillor Powers, I saw you had your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Well, I used to sit on the licensing panel at district council, and I must say Andrew has given us the correct advice. But I think it's, personally think it's much easier to go directly to the licensing department at Teinbridge because that is where the district council or anybody else will go anyway. So if you're trying to get something sorted out quickly, it's... Any member of the public, doesn't have to be a councillor, has the right to write to the licensing department if they have a query or a problem or a worry. It isn't inclusive just to councillors.
Thank you, councillor Powers. Councillor Pedrick, Lynne Pedrick, I see you've got your blue hand raised. Please go ahead.
I agree with Terry, really shouldn't, should never have gone to district because it's very difficult. But one of the, and I also agree that we need some clarity around it, but I have spoke to the licensing over one establishment. And what comes out of it is you can say to them till you're blue in the face, you know, this is happening. But unless you've got evidence, actual evidence, they will not do anything about it because they are not breaching any licensing laws. So there's lots of issues around this. And the main one being that if you are going to take something to licensing, you need to have evidence to back it up.
Okay, thank you, councillor Pedrick. Any other comments, please? Councillor Morehead, did you have your hand raised? Please go ahead.
I would just add that I know of one particular problem area where individuals have provided evidence to the police as well, but it doesn't seem to change anything at Teinbridge via the licensing authority. And that's why I think that there ought to be some kind of clause that allows local communities through their parish councils, their town councils, there should be some channel for, as you say, evidence and/or a list of complaints or problems which have arisen to be taken directly concerning any particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morehead. So, yes, councillor Lather, Terry Lather, please go ahead.
Only just to say that, yeah, I think that's absolutely right. I could never understand really why licensing was taken out of the magistrate's court and taken to local authorities. It's become very much more complicated. I would just say that it's nowhere near as easy to sort yourself out. One time you used to have a local court where you had a bunch of magistrates, the policemen and all the rest of it, who'd turn up these problems, and you had to have evidence. But you've got a decision on the day, you've got a decision, in most cases, 10 quid. It takes an awful long time to go through a law authority, and it's a very expensive business for licensees to do so. And I sometimes suspect that the real motivation was not so much to improve the control of licence premises and other things, but to increase money coming in from the licensees, from the licensing trade. It's been very difficult for them. And I know you talk to a licensee and you tell your experience of it compared to the old days. And also how difficult it is to get things sorted out from their point of view. They have trouble sometimes. They want something out of their licence. And licenses are generally written so broadly that it's very difficult to put your finger on exactly what you need done. Because, I mean, for instance, we're talking about, reference was made earlier, very long licensing, late licensing law. If you look at the regulations, they virtually favour late licensing laws, very much against the principles that they used to be. But again, I'm biased because I like the old system. But thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Lather. So I think we're all in agreement that we want more, say, as a local council in the licensing. And councillor Wrigley did make a proposal earlier that we respond to this. So councillor Wrigley, would you like to sum up and repeat what you mentioned earlier on in the discussion, please?
Yes, I think it does sound like there is a position where we want to have a local say on local issues and make local input to the decisions that are there. My particular one was also to actually have reviews on some of the more unusual licences that are currently, as I understand it, on a permanent basis. And you need to have a serious amount of incidents to actually cause there to be a review, because that's an unusual thing to happen. So I think the summary would be that we should return a representations, we should submit representations and request that we have local input to the licensing process as a local town council. And I'm not sure whether we have agreement for the other part of looking at the permanent licences that should be reviewed on a more regular basis as well.
Thank you, councillor Wrigley. Okay, so councillor Powers, please go ahead if you have a question.
Well, I was just going to, I have absolutely no disagreement with councillor Wrigley. But I would say that if we as a council are going to have an input into this, then all members of council must be trained in licensing. It is, as councillor Lather has said, a very complex matter. And before I was able to sit on licensing at district, I went through two sets of learning process. And actually, to be honest with you, I continued to learn while I was sitting on the board. So it isn't just a matter of us as councillors coming in and making these comments. We have to have the knowledge to make these comments. And so therefore we would need good in-depth training.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Lather, another question from you. Go ahead, please.
No, not particularly another question. If that was a proposal by councillor Wrigley, then I would want to second it.
Thank you, councillor Lather. Thank you. So can I ask all councillors in favour of that? Please raise your hand. Okay. Thank you. That's everybody. And councillor Dawson, can I ask you whether you support that, please?
I do, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dawson. Thank you. So that's unanimous from everybody here present. Thank you. Okay, where are we? Item number 14, bathing water quality. To consider writing to South West Water requesting urgent attention to renewing sewerage drains and tanks so as not to negatively impact the bathing water quality of the parish's beaches. This is an important issue for Dawlish, both for Dawlish Warren Beach, Dawlish Town Beach, Carton Cove... Both for Dawlish Warren Beach, Dawlish Town Beach, Carton Cove and Holcombe Beach. Recently, there's been a news article in Devon Live. It was the weekend before last. Including mentioning beaches not to swim at because of sewage on the beaches. It did list a couple of beaches in Dawlish. Then it was from a report by surfers against sewage. And since seeing that, I've been keeping up with surfers against sewage reports, Safer Seas Service app. And it was this weekend that they reported that there was a high level of possible pollution at one of our other parish beaches. And so considering that Dawlish attracts many visitors every year and they are a seaside resort. And we are also looking at a green recovery. I think this is a really important issue. And this could be an opportunity to write to South West Water to request urgent attention to renewing the infrastructure to keep a high bathing water quality on our beaches. So that's up for discussion. Any councillors wish to make any comments? Councillor Wiggly, please go ahead.
Well, I'm well known in this council for my battles with South West Water over the years and getting improvements to the systems throughout, throughout Dawlish. And I think it can't hurt to keep the, keep the pressure on. Some of the elements of our system are still, how shall I put it, antiquated and really not up to scratch. And so I think it's, whilst I, 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 I know South West Water are particularly difficult to get moving and their investment schemes are in five-year tranches. And it's a long, long battle to get them to change things and to add more infrastructure. I think the more we can write to them and put pressure on them to, to actually do things and to point this out to them, I think the better. So I would wholeheartedly support this and propose, I, I, I'm not sure, Madam Chair, if you've already made a proposal. But if you haven't, I propose that we do write to them and point out the news reports and ask them for their response.
Thank you councillor Wiggly. Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll accept your proposal. councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Yes, well, first of all, delighted to second that. Also a comment, I was on the far side of the vote code one, in the corner behind the groin there, the wave breaker. Just a couple of days ago, we was clearing some rubbish up there. And the smell of sewage was strong. So there was certainly something not right with that beach. Now, it could be the fact that we had very, very heavy rain, as you know, on that storm, not that many days before that. And what happens is the water comes down, goes in the retaining tanks. And when it's a massive amount of water, they can't take anymore. And then they overspill, obviously, because they've got to go somewhere into the sea. So probably some of that is, as we quite rightly pointed out, the tanks aren't big enough. But with climate change, I think we've got a bit of a problem. Because the tanks would have to be huge to take some of the new heavy rainstorms that we're likely to get. And I don't think they've even been calculated yet. They say we have a hundred-year tank put in. You hear these developments. Well, they're not a hundred years. What I've seen, they're going to last about 25 years. Because this is the way the weather's going. So I don't have a solution for it. Obviously, there's far too many houses. But all the new properties do normally have soakaways, which obviously is good. But there is still all the old housing stock, the drains go into, the, sorry, the rainwater goes into the drains. And that's really the problem. So, you know, if they did do bigger tanks, it would solve a lot. But that's many hundreds of thousands of pounds to spend on that. But we should ask, and I've seconded it.
Thank you councillor Heath. Thank you. And before we go to vote councillor Morehead, I see you've got your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to add a few things, a few aspects of this. I pick up on the point that councillor Wiggly said about South West Water being difficult and tardy. Eighteen years or so ago, I was one of the people who started there. And over the following years, we tried to get South West Water to take into account all the proposed future development, which is now with us and at being increased. They never did it. They, they've tinkered with things. So my fear is that they, they haven't got the, the capacity, regardless of all the extra problems with climate change and flash floods, they haven't got the capacity to begin with. And what they do have is the authority to discharge into the sea at when they can't cope. I believe there are some changes coming with that, but I don't know the details of legislation. However, it always seems to be, and there is a reason for it. It always seems to happen roundabout bank holiday weekends and weeks in August and July, particularly August. And when you think about it, we have hundreds more people, many hundreds more, who come on holiday here. And they all have input, shall we say, into the sewage system. So we're in a particular situation here where we not only have increased permanent residential development, we also have a large influx, thankfully, of tourists. We're in a particular situation. And I think South West Water really should take this into account and try to do something about it. Not just literally dump it when they can't cope.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Thank you. councillor Pedrick, John Pedrick, sorry, I see you've got your blue hand raised. Please go ahead.
You can hear me now, yes, okay?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. There was a slight glitch. Yes, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I, I think that the infrastructure in Dawlish isn't that antiquated. It's only probably installed probably twelve, twenty years ago. And lots of houses have been added since then. But we're in unfortunate position because we have an estuary either side of us. And we have the River Dore as well flowing into the sea. Now, the, the estuaries are the side of us. One serves Exeter and the other one serves New Nabbit. And it is a pretty well-known fact that if there's a complication with heavy rainfall, the sewage treatment plant at the upper reaches of the team will discharge into the team. And that can be a complication. So, so I think that possibly the infrastructure in Dawlish is okay, or okay-ish. But it's either side of us that the problems are. I can give you an example. If you go down to Babicum and, and Torquay, the waters there are crystal clear because there isn't any discharge from the land in, into the sea there. So it's the estuaries either side of us and the sewage treatment plants on those estuaries that might be contributing to the problem.
Okay, thank you councillor Pedrick. Any other councillors wishing to make any comments before we go for a vote? Because we've had the proposal which has been seconded. Any other councillors wishing to comment? Please raise your hand. I'm just checking for blue hands, but I can't see any blue hands either. Okay, so we'll take a vote then, please, on writing to South West Water requesting urgent attention. All councillors in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. And councillor Dawson, would you like to speak and say how your vote, are you pleased?
Absolutely for, in agreement, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Dawson. councillor Gobright, sorry, your hand was raised. Please go ahead. Did you wish to speak? Please go ahead.
No, I was voting, but there's a, there's a bit of a break up on the system, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So we all supported that unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next page, item number 16. So this is Dawlish minor injury units. This is to consider writing to the clinical commissioning group, asking for.
I think we've skipped over item 15.
Where?
On page four.
Yes. Sorry, it's going dark. That's my mistake. Sorry, it's going dark in here. Going back to then, item number 15. Mental health and suicide prevention working group. To consider and approve the draft publications submitted by the working group for print and choose a design of the front page from enclosed options. So thank you very much to councillor Tamlin and all the members of the working group for their hard work in putting this leaflet together. I'm sure councillors all had a chance to have a look at it. It's full of really good information and a lot of support groups that I've, that I've looked up from the information through the websites. I think it's excellent. So I'll open this up for councillors to make their comments. councillor Tamlin, please, please go ahead. This is thanks to you and your working group. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I assume that you have all read my report explaining why we have produced the leaflet, especially during this difficult time. Our intention is to circulate to 6,000 homes in Dawlish. And the cost will only be £289 for printing with volunteers delivering. We hope you like the leaflet and you would like the working group. And we would like you to, and you would like the working group to continue. I also highlighted some of the topics that we could, that we like, would like to look at next. And safe talk training is top of our list. I'd just like to show you now, obviously you've seen it, but here's the leaflet. And this is the alternative cover of which I think we're going, we're going to let you find out what your preference is. So that's one cover and that's the other cover. I think you've all had copies of that. I, right. Let me just check where I am now. And right. I would, I would just like to explain the leaflet. It is a model based on Grassroots, a charity in Brighton and Hove. Grassroots is an award-winning charity and a UK leader on suicide prevention. They believe that suicide can be prevented through open and direct conversation, which is known as safe, safe, safe talk. The pages in our leaflet are intended as a self-help tool. Or if someone is concerned about someone else. It is not a leaflet that is intended as a substitute for professional services or frontline workers. The pages contain information about how to find help and support. And anyone with suicide thoughts should seek help from the crisis service, doctors or mental health service. Thank you very much for listening. And are there any questions?
Thank you very much councillor Tamlin. Thank you. Do councillors have any questions? I can see councillor Taylor and then councillor Wiggly. Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Tamlin for all of the hard work and for the, the group, to the group too, for all of the hard work that has been put in in the production of, of these draft, draft leaflets. Very pleased to also receive a, a copy, hard copy from, from the, from the office. And I must say that, you know, they, they, they do, they, they are quite arresting. They're good, you know, if, if, if one was to come through, through my, my door, I, I would, I would read it. And I think it, it does, you know, it, it's a very good thing, especially at this time where we, where a lot of people are spending a lot more time indoors. It is, it is a difficult, a difficult time for, for everybody in the, in the community. So, so I welcome, I welcome these leaflets. And I think either of the designs would be, would be very good. But happy to hear what other people have to say.
Thank you councillor Taylor. I think councillor Wiggly, did you have your hand? And then I know that councillor Linda Pedrick has blue hands. Councillor Wiggly first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I mean, my thanks also go to councillor Tamlin and the whole of the group that's been working on this. I think it is an excellent leaflet. I think it, it's fantastic work. And from my work at Teambridge with the Community Safety Partnership, I know this is an area where everything will help. And I think this is a very good initiative to put this leaflet out across the town and wholeheartedly support that. But more than that, also wholeheartedly support the continuation of the group and the continuing good work that it's going to be doing. Because if you can come together and produce a, a great leaflet like this, we can put out. I think you will go on and do more things that this council can be proud of and can help the residents of our town. So thank you for all of that. On the design of the cover, I, I, it, it's interesting to, an interesting alternative between the two. I was actually going to suggest something, there's a mix between the two. Because I very much liked the text in the bubble on the first one. But I also liked the full colour of the cover of the second one. So I was going to suggest if we could have the text for the do you need help? Which I think is a different font to the, to the second one, similar but different. I think the first one stands out more is the text. So the first, first, the text with the, the do you need help text from the quotation bubble printed on the solid background would be my suggestion of, of the, for the cover. But I'm not sure how we're going to go through, if everybody's trying to make small changes like that. But that would be my, my proposal.
Thank you councillor Wiggly. councillor Linda Pedrick, you've had your, your blue hands raised. Would you like to go ahead?
Thank you. The content of the leaflet, the organisations, is brilliant. The text concerns me a bit, but I'll go with, with what other people think. I think it, it can be a bit scary, was how someone described it. The cover for me has got to be this one. The other one, I thought, was just too dark and depressing. And this one, if I saw this leaflet, I would pick it up and have a look at it. As far as the rest of the things that you're talking about doing, we have said originally that there were going to be other people on this group. And I think we need to now be putting those people on the group because, or are we not putting any more people on the group? But there, for me, there should be a few experts on the group, you know, someone from Mind or, I don't know, from other organisations. But why has that disappeared from view now? That's, that's what I would say about that really. And that's it really. But congratulations councillor Tamlin. It's really good, some really good content in there.
Thank you. Can I reply to you on, 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 on the, on the group? We would welcome new members into our group. I think with the pandemic, that has been delayed. And if you can think back, the town clerk was actually going to put something in the paper to attract them. And then they were going to go before council to be interviewed. So it's the pandemic that stopped it. But the group would welcome another four members.
Thank you councillor Tamlin. So councillor Pals has her hand raised and named councillor Mayne. councillor Pals, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Yes, councillor Tamlin, this is excellent work, first class. I'm sure it wasn't as easy as it looked when we picked up a piece of paper to read it all. I'm sure you had a, a lot of, lot of work to do to get this. Without a shadow of a doubt, I, I prefer this one. Because one of the things I learnt when I've been looking at leaflets in the past, there are certain colours that are dark that make you think, oh, I don't particularly want to look at that. Whereas this is colourful. And I think if you're in a dark place, you don't want anything dark to look at. That's a personal opinion. But I do know that printers look at things and they're not terribly keen. and they're not terribly keen on these sort of dark backgrounds. All these organisations in there, I didn't know half of them existed. So, that's excellent. I'm really pleased and I might expect there's some more out there if we only knew about them, but I don't. I, I was a little bit concerned about this. And maybe it's just me, but thinking about suicide, worried about somebody, worry about somebody, that I understand, but thinking about suicide made me think, well, am I thinking about suicide? So, a little bit concerned about the way, the way it was worded. But I mean, if everybody else is happy, maybe it's something that's wrong with me. But I, I think it makes you think more about whether you're going to commit suicide or not. That might sound awful to some people, but that's just a personal opinion, councillor Tamlin.
Thank you councillor Prowse, councillor Mayne and then councillor Rosie Dawson.
And councillor John Pedrick, chairman.
Okay, okay councillor Mayne, please go ahead.
Thank you. And there's a couple of questions I wanted to ask councillor Tamlin. And I think councillor Price has sort of covered what I was going to say. Have you had help with the text, Carol? Has somebody advised you of the right wording or is this something?
Yeah, we, we based it on, based it on the grassroots model, which is, which, which a lot of professional people go on safe talking and they have proved that this is, that you need to put it up front, you need to ask, you need to talk about it, not to hide it. I mean, years ago, you know, we, we hate mental health. I mean, you know, Auntie Thelma had a nerve problem. We didn't talk about mental health, but we're now talking about suicide. And yes, I've had help from them. I also sent a copy to, a draft copy to Open Door to see what they felt about it with, with their clientele. And they said, yes, that's great. I've also sent a copy to Nicola Glassbrook, Devon County Council, who's public health specialist, and she's seen it as well. And it's been okay. Does that help?
Yeah, oh yes, it does because being a novice reading this, it's so easy to put thoughts into people's minds that are just bubbling below the surface. And the wording's got to be, got to be perfect. And if you've sought advice on it, then, you know, that's fine with me. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
We did, we did, we did actually tone it down a bit, you know. We, if you're feeling suicide, we said, if you're feeling low as well. But if you see, thinking about suicide, there's a lot of positive stuff in there really. There's some very good paragraphs in there. Spend some time thinking about your reasons for living, et cetera, et cetera, if you look through it. And on, on the other side, there's about being honest and listening and encouraging them to, to get help, not telling them, but going along with them. So, if you read each one, they sort of add up. But yeah, that is, that is used nationally. These, these comments are used nationally.
Thank you councillor Tamlin, thank you councillor Mayne. So councillor Rosie Dawson, then councillor John Pedrick and then councillor Byron Woods. Councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that talking about suicide and mental health struggles can always feel difficult, awkward and frightening for people. During an intense two-day approved suicide intervention course, which is the next step up from safe talk, it was really clear that asking directly if people are thinking of ending their lives is so, so important in engaging with people and getting people on the road back to safety. People need to be direct. Information that goes out needs to be direct. Asking someone directly who is not feeling suicidal or is not going to make them want to kill themselves. And that was very, very clear in all the training that I've done. I think this leaflet is direct and inclusive with a dose of kindness and sensitivity. I think it's very important to be listing all the help available in order to hopefully signpost people before they become desperate or low enough to consider ending their lives. And I just wanted to thank the rest of the working group and the chair and particularly councillor Tamlin for communicating the safety officer at Devon County to ensure that this is hitting the right note.
Thank you councillor Dawson, thank you. Councillor John Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you chairman. Yes, I mean, I agree, it's, it's, it's quite a good leaflet. I'm impressed with the cost actually. Was it 6,000 for, for £280?
£280 for 7,000 actually.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, it's excellent value. It really is. I'm, I'm really impressed with that.
I'd like to come to F and G for that, if that's okay.
Well, okay. But, and regarding the wording, I mean, we've got 16 councillors here or more or less 16. And I think we've all got a different view of how things should be worded. I mean, I'm sort of not totally comfortable, I have to say, but I accept what is there if the majority want to go with it. And my preferred front page would be this one. You can, oh, you can see it now, yeah. There you go. I'm praising. That's my preferred front page. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor Woods, please go ahead.
Yeah, for the whole working group again, well done. Just one thing on it, why is this going to print? Is any chance they could look at doing as well as what you're doing? But some small ones, there's four pages and I don't know how it's coming out, whether it's coming A4 or A3, et cetera. But just some small ones. I understand how Dawson, councillor Dawson says you've got to really hit it head on. But also sometimes some people are a bit nervous and shy about it as well. And you should have some little ones that they can just pick up from the, the desk somewhere, do you know what I mean? And given over a A4 sheet, if that is the size. So, all I'm just saying is in chance they could have some small ones as well.
No, it's not, it's not A4. It, it is a small one. It's quite a small one, but certainly not A4.
It's A5 chairman, A4 folded in half.
Okay, thank you. Thank you councillor Woods. So then councillor Morehead and then councillor Heath and then councillor Linda Pedrick. Thank you.
Thank you madam chairman. I've been part of the group and I can assure you that a tremendous amount of thought guided by councillor Tamlin has gone into this and professional advice has been asked for and taken. And thinking about how the group, she would like the group to, to go forward with the agreement of this full council. Somebody said that we ought to have professional people. I can absolutely be sure myself that nothing would be taken forward without professional people coming, talking, advising or whatever, from what I've seen already. I just would like to draw attention to what I think is a very important part of this leaflet. And that it, it's so inclusive. I know councillor Woods said something, I'm just going to be a bit specific. There are things for children, elderly, male, female, migrants, prison leavers, students, homeless. There is advice for anyone with any kind of problem. There is access to help. And I think just from that point of view alone, it's a one-stop information portal. It's just, I think it's brilliant. And I do know a heck of a lot of work went into it. And so it should because it's such a very important thing. You don't want to give people the wrong information. And I congratulate councillor Tamlin on getting it to this stage.
Thank you councillor Morehead, thank you. And then councillor Heath, you had your hand raised and then councillor Linda Pedrick. Please go ahead councillor Heath.
Thank you, chair. Just one little thing, the wording that one or two of us were just puzzling over, but obviously haven't been on the panel as it were, which is a lot of work. Congratulations. As I used to be a pastor, it is certainly on my heart how we should be looking after people. Can we just repeat the words again? I haven't dropped the leaflet somewhere. Thinking of suicide, was it? What was the, what was that phrase?
Thinking of suicide and then the other one is worried about someone.
Right. I agree with, with the experts that, you know, if you're already thinking about it, you're thinking about it. That, that wording won't make you think about it if you're not already. But there are sometimes with language, your ways of saying the same thing but comes over slightly different with a nuance on it. Just jotting down here, just thinking, we could think about, and I'm just literally throwing it to all of us. We're not on the panel, so we hadn't had the time to think about it. But how about feeling suicidal? That's less, less of a planting word. But thinking of suicide is what's called a planting word. Is it, oh, you know, I am actually, how do I do that? Whereas feeling, but it's more about your feelings. It's not really telling you, you should be doing it. Now, as I say, I'm not a mental nurse or doctor, so, psychiatry. So, I might be wrong, but I just wondered, as we're puzzling over it, what do people think? Is it something perhaps the chair of the working group could go back and just ask the opinions of the experts they've already asked to see whether or not they think that would be slightly less, less threatening or not? And I'm only putting it forward to see what you think.
Do you think suicidal thoughts is similar to what you're saying? If it was suicidal thoughts?
Yeah, that, that is, yeah, it's exactly the same thing as feeling suicidal, yeah. Feeling suicidal thoughts, yeah, that's, that could even be an improvement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look at that. It's just only a draft at the moment, obviously.
Yeah, see what they say, I would say. Run it past a few of the people, see if they think it's, one's better than the other or not.
Okay. Thank you councillor Heath. Thank you, thank you councillor Tamlin. Councillor Linda Pedrick, did you still have your blue hand raised?
I do still have my hand raised, thank you. And I actually agree with councillor Heath, that's, that's a good change to make. And it does sound, it does sound better. But one thing that I will say, you know, we talk about you have to be straightforward. Different people react to different ways of being spoken to. You could get someone that is suicidal and you have to talk to them in a completely different way. You have to take into account how each person reacts and are. So, I, I don't believe that you have the same, the same thing for each person, which may be something that you can take into account when you do your safe talk training. But I actually would like to propose that we accept this leaflet with perhaps that one change with this cover and say thank you to the group.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor Morehead, you had your hand up next. Please go ahead and then councillor Mayne.
Taking on board what councillor Heath has said and what councillor Linda Pedrick's just said, would I be right in thinking that you're talking about this page? At the bottom it says, if you're experiencing a personal crisis and are unable to cope or you or someone else is feeling suicidal, there we could put in having suicidal thoughts. Then it just says people who care are ready to help. It was almost there. That's just the, and in that page, yes, it tells you there are different things, ways to approach, doesn't it?
Yes.
It's, it's about as comprehensive as you can get, I think. But that, just that, does that councillor Heath, does that sort of, that fits what you were saying?
On the front page.
On the front page it says, if you're experiencing a personal crisis and are unable to cope or you or someone else is, currently it says feeling suicidal, you could say having suicidal thoughts. And then it carries on, people who care are ready to help. Does that make, does that fit?
Yeah, I think it does. Isn't there a separate line still saying feeling suicidal elsewhere inside?
No.
No, you've changed that. You've changed that.
Yeah.
We're going to change that, you see, but there's nothing else, no.
Yeah.
Well, it's that, it's that one on the yellow line that says thinking about suicide.
We're going to change it, yeah.
Change that to.
Suicidal thoughts.
Having suicidal thoughts.
Right, right. I think that does soften it without losing its, what you're saying in communicating. I think it is great.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other councillors wishing to speak before we, before we first of all approve, approve the draft publication? And thank councillor Tamlin and all the members of the working group. And then we go to select the actual front page design. Councillor Mayne, please go ahead.
Councillor Pedrick proposed that we accept it with the alterations and I want to second that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, so.
Chairman, just before you move to any vote, I did notice councillor Dawson had her blue hand up, but it does seem to have gone off, but I'll just unmute just in case she does wish to speak.
Okay, councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
No, I'm good. Point was already made, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Dawson. So, yes councillor Linda Pedrick.
My, my proposal was to, that we accept this leaflet with the cover as is, with the added change.
Okay, thank you. So, do we take it all as that and do yes please?
Yeah, chairman, just before you move to vote, I just want to clarify. You're obviously about to vote on which style of leaflet incorporating the suggested amendments that have been made.
Yes.
Councillor Tamlin, are you also seeking approval from council for the cost of printing and for it to go out to distribution now? It would seem sensible that you're able to take that decision now rather than waiting until the end of the month for F and GP. So, if, if the, if the leaflet is now at a stage, subject to those amendments, that it's then complete, I would suggest that you then go forward and then hit the ball running, as it were.
Yes, please. And I, I could sort of contact the person who's running the volunteers and set it up and we can have them out October, well, September, September. Get them out as soon as possible.
I think that would be excellent. Thank you councillor Tamlin. So, let's go ahead for a vote on that. We've got a proposal from councillor Linda Pedrick and that was seconded by councillor Heath.
And councillor Mayne, chairman. I, I'm sorry, just, I think councillor Taylor wants to speak, I'm not sure.
Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Only to say, happy to help with the delivery.
Oh, brilliant. Excellent. Thank you councillor Taylor. So, can we go for a vote on that please then for the, for the leaflet, for the getting it printed and distributed and with this as a cover? Please, all councillors raise your hands, please. Thank you, all in favour? And councillor Dawson, please could you speak in support or?
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Dawson. So, that's excellent, that's, that's approved. And thanks once again to councillor Tamlin and all the members of that working group for your hard work. Thank you.
Did we, did we, did you vote on the finance to cover the cost?
Yes, we did. I was saying that, yes, yes, we did.
Can I thank you all? Thank you.
Okay. And then I think we're also, are we voting on the continu- continuation of the work of the working group? And looking forward for your group to continue with the details as in your reports? Are councillors?
Chairman, that didn't, that didn't form part of the original motion on the agenda, so, so no.
Okay, okay, okay. So, we'll, we'll look at that again in the future then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Councillor Mary Lauder, did you still wish to speak? Is that your hand raised?
Yes, yes. I'm, I'm, I'm up for to do delivery. I do Brook Street, no Town Street. I, I need those.
Excellent, thank you very much councillor Lauder. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going on to the next item. Item number 16 on the next page, Dorish minor injuries unit. I am on the correct item now. To consider writing to the clinical commissioning group, asking for clarification. To consider writing to the clinical commissioning group, asking for clarification when the minor injuries unit at Dawlish Hospital is to reopen. And I'd like to now ask our rep from the council on the coastal health working group to introduce this item. Please councillor Rosie Dawson, I know that you are a rep on that. Would you like to go ahead and, and speak on this, please?
Thank you. I requested that this go on the agenda after attending the most recent coastal health meeting as the town council representative. As we know, during the initial stage of the pandemic, the MIU, the Minor Injuries Unit at Dawlish was closed. With staff and patients working from Newton Abbott Hospital as a designated Covid symptom-free zone. Timmouth Hospital, whilst outpatient services were suspended, was a Covid assessment area managed by us and Timmouth's GPs to protect those still attending surgeries for appointments. The Covid clinic has now been stood down and planned assessment and treatments are operating again. But the minor injury unit is yet to open despite it being high season here in Dawlish. I have questioned this and asked for a date by which we may expect the unit to be open and fully functioning again. But have been told it will be at some point in the next two months. Several residents have contacted me having needed this service over the summer. There is growing concern amongst the people we serve. With our increased general and seasonal population and an increase in families struggling financially, which affects MIU and out-of-hours access when it's 20-minute drive away. I feel we ought to be pushing the CCG for a reopening date or at the very least some clarity and reassurance. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dawson. And thank you for bringing this to our attention and requesting the item on the agenda. It is a very important item and my next door neighbour was only asking me this evening when it was reopening. I see that councillor Louder has a hand raised, councillor Prowse, councillor, I'm sorry councillor Linda Pedrick and then councillor Louder, councillor Prowse. Councillor Pedrick, please go ahead.
And we have had a document which talks about what's going to happen and we are having a presentation. Surely, we don't need to write a letter, we can ask them when they do the presentation. I have been to Newton Abbott, I had to go a couple of weeks ago because I had something wrong, so I had to go and get it seen to. I spoke to the nurses there. They, the reason that the MIU got shut down was because there is a shortage of staff as well. And they are expected to go back within the next few weeks. So I don't really see the need to write a letter when we've got some information in the document that we've been provided with. And also, we can ask that question. Now, if people are going to say, well, October's too far away, then maybe we ask to get a presentation within the next two weeks. But we really don't need to be writing letters when they are actually going to come and talk to us.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor Terry Louder, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm able to support this. I think we do need to write a letter. The MIU is very important to Dawlish and I think we, we need to strengthen. I mean, the proposal is that we ask for clarification when it's going to open. I think we ought to put a bit in there saying that, you know, to remind the CCG, this is a very important facility at the Dawlish. We really do need it back and we need it back as soon as possible. So not asking just for clarification, but let's have a little urgency feed. We don't need to be aggressive. You know, we don't need to jump up down and demand that it's open tomorrow. But I think we do need to urge some sort of swift action. Let's get it open again, it's important.
Thank you councillor Terry Louder, I totally agree with you, thank you. I know councillor Prowse had had a hand raised and then councillor Heath, councillor Prowse, please go ahead.
Well, this is a matter I feel very strongly about, very strongly. Because I fought alongside councillor Clapworthy and Dr Whitehead for a very, very long time to get a minor injuries unit. And then to get the hours extended. And it was a hard, hard job. And I was, in spite of Covid and all the other things, duly horrified when it didn't, when it closed down. And I was told when I made inquiries that it was because there wasn't enough staff. It was always absolutely vital that we had a minor injuries unit during the height of the season. With staycation or whatever you care to call it. Dawlish has been absolutely packed this month and we haven't had a minor injuries unit. It was, it was absolutely, it's dire when we haven't got one. They must surely have some forward planning whereby they know when they're going to open it. A couple of months, that's not good enough. It should have been open before, it should have been open. If you can open a pub, if you can open all these other things, then there is one thing that we do need. And that's our hospital services on the doorstep. And I am very, I know what you're saying councillor Terry Louder about not being aggressive. But it was such a hard fight to get it in the first place. And it is at the back of my mind that if we don't get it soon, we might never get it. Because I know how hard I fought. John Clapworthy was up and down all the time and Dr Whitehead was, well, he was, he opened the extra. And it was, it was really vital. So I am very disappointed to think that we might get it in two months' time. It's not good enough. I don't know, I, I, I think that the, the idea of having a, a special Zoom in a presentation within the next two weeks is excellent. We don't want to go another month, it's another month. Sorry to be so, well, strong about it, but it's, it's really important to the people of Dawlish. And we are growing with all these new houses and all the people around. And, and, and I'm quite certain that September will be busy. Because there are people who go on holiday in September who would normally go abroad and are certainly not going to go this year. So I think it's very vital.
Thank you, thank you councillor Prowse. So then councillor Heath, councillor Rosie Dawson, councillor Martin Wiggley and then councillor Mayne. So councillors, please go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Well, I, I feel quite strongly about this, that's why I originally put my head up. I want to second the proposal. And the reason why is because I agree with councillor Prowse and so on. In fact, Dr White was my doctor before he left and he was very much of the local people. And I also know that when things are shut and people seem to be surviving, there are people on finance board who'll say, oh, we don't need it now. So the quicker that comes back and to say we should wait weeks and weeks and weeks for it to come back. It's not what our, our council should be doing. We should be saying, please, even telephone calls, get letters, we want it open now. And that's what I think we should say. But as somebody else has just said, say it very gently.
Thank you councillor Heath. So we've got a proposal and seconded, but councillor Dawson, please go ahead and then councillor Mayne. Councillor Dawson, please.
I just wanted to, to reiterate that, you know, as long as residents are concerned and are emailing us or shouting to us in the street about something. Then that requires us to act, in, in my opinion. And I agree that, you know, with councillor Prowse, that sometimes you can end up losing, losing something if it's closed for too long. And just going back to something that councillor Wiggley said at the very beginning of the meeting. People are facing a lot of financial instability, financial ruin at the moment. And I personally know of families who have struggled to get to healthcare because it's now a 20-minute journey for people who have needed it. And that, that to me is not, it's not okay for our community.
Thank you councillor Dawson. Councillor Mayne next and then I think councillor Wiggley, did you have your hand up? Councillor Mayne, please go ahead.
And councillor Linda Pedrick, chairman.
Thank you. And I agree with absolutely everything that's been said by anyone. But what I would like, I, I, I think, whether I can propose it, there's already been a proposal. That we try and bring a Zoom meeting forward to, within the next couple of weeks. And then we can show the strength of our opinion rather than write a letter. Because to be honest, by the time we get a letter written and sent off and get a reply, we'll be due to have a Zoom meeting anyway. So that's what I would rather do. Bring the Zoom meeting forward a couple, within the next couple of weeks, if possible. That falls on Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mayne. Councillor Wiggley, please go ahead. Councillor Wiggley?
Uh, thank you. Oh, well, I find myself in violent agreement with councillor Prowse. Second time in a meeting, we agree on things, so that's excellent. So it must be, that must be what we need to do. And I admire her passion and her fight for fighting for the facilities that we need in Dawlish. And absolutely agree, if we let this say closed, it will be gone. So we've got to do that. Now, I think we need to be careful about conflating this with the ongoing consultation, which is what I think is happening with the meeting in October. And trying to bring that forward and conflate the two issues, I think would be disastrous. Because that consultation is a much longer term and wider thing. So we need to be very clear and very precise. And I think we have a single point and writing a letter actually translates into sending it by email, which can be done tomorrow. And I think we should be asking the clerk to send this communication tomorrow to the, or as soon as humanly possible, to the CCG. Saying, when will the MIU reopen? It is urgent and necessary. And let's take the passion from councillor Prowse's fight and actually put this into this and actually demand that this is reopened as soon as humanly possible. Otherwise, we run the risk of losing it and that would be disastrous.
Thank you councillor Wiggley, so yes, thank you. And then councillor Morehead.
Chairman, I believe councillor Linda Pedrick was next.
Okay, councillor Linda Pedrick, please go ahead.
Okay. And I haven't got a problem with writing a letter in any way, shape or form. But what I'm saying is that we should bring the presentation forward. Because if you're going to attack it, attack it from all angles and bring it forward and ask them in, in that as well. Because that's also going to be live on Facebook and people in Dawlish will see that and will see us bringing it up and will see us asking the question. So I think we need to do both things.
Okay, thank you councillor Pedrick. And then councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
I just wanted to add a little bit of embellishment really to things which have been said. It's some time now since the MIU opened and it's not just the residents of Dawlish then who appreciate it. As has been referred to, we have a much larger population here now. And on top of that, we're in a quite different position from, for example, Timmouth or Sholden or whatever. We have this huge influx of temporary holidaymakers on the caravan sites. And that's exactly when you have little accidents with your children and so forth. And you haven't got all the things you've got at home to deal with it and you need help. And I actually didn't know that it had been closed, this was right at the beginning of the lockdown. And I had to pick up a friend who'd hurt his head badly. I drove down to the MIU to find it closed. And I can assure you, it's not very funny trying to drive to Newton Abbott, especially through the traffic we encounter between here and Timmouth. With someone who's bleeding profusely. So I have personal experience of the necessity for this. But my point is that we have a huge influx in the summer. And as councillor Prowse said, we're probably still going to get an Indian summer, if you like, of visitors. We desperately need this open now, please. We need it more now than we ever did. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. So we've got the proposal, which has been seconded to write an urgent letter. Asking for the minor injuries unit, the date of when it's going to open. And we've got that seconded as well. So a councillor is ready to go for a vote to support that, please.
Chairman, both councillors, Terry Louder and Mary Louder, have got their hands up, I believe.
All right, okay, councillor Terry Louder, please go ahead.
I think it would be in my advantage to defer to my, my colleague.
Okay, councillor Mary Louder, please go ahead.
Yes, I was just adding to councillor Morehead's thing. And we, I, we have personal information about the costing. And I know recently it cost us £60 to get a taxi to Newton Abbott. And that was when somebody close to us was bleeding. So it is vital that we get this unit open as soon as possible.
Thank you councillor Louder, thank you. So a councillor is now ready to go for a vote.
Councillor Terry Louder, chairman.
Councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Sorry, chairman, I believe councillor Terry Louder wished to come back.
All right, councillor Terry Louder, please go ahead.
I'll need to repeat really what I proposed to start with. That we write an urgent letter strengthening our wish to get this, the, the MIU open because it is so important. The, the proposal and the, the item on the agenda is, is almost just asking for the information. We don't want information, we want action.
Thank you.
As far as the Zoom meeting is concerned, I've got no strong feelings. I, I just feel, I think, I suspect a little, a little like councillor Wiggley does, that it is mixing two things. The Zoom meeting is designed for them to talk to us and give us information. And they don't really want to come and be told things or have complaints or feedback or whatever. All right, very well having it, but let's get the letter in first. That's, we can carry on if you like later on, but let's get the letter in first.
Thank you councillor Louder, thank you, I, I agree with that. So can we now go to the votes for that proposal that we write urgent for action? Councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, just finishing off, I, I think it's been actually said by Terry Louder now anyway. But I, I seconded the motion, I thought it said that we would ask them to open it ASAP. But not the wording I heard earlier on, which is, please tell us when, begging bowl in hand, you're going to open it. We've got to be far more positive. We don't want them to say, oh, thank you for that, we're opening it on the 29th of October. No, we, we want to ask them, which is why I assume, if we haven't, I'd like to put an amendment in. We want to ask them, could they open it like tomorrow, next day? If not, why not? That's the sort of, I'll let our clerk do the wording on that, but that's the sort of proposal I thought we was doing.
Thank you, thank you. Well, it was, it was councillor Prowse that worded it so excellently. And then it got seconded by councillor Wiggley, who's disappeared from my screen. So can I ask councillor Prowse or Andrew, would you like to repeat the proposal?
Yeah, that would help.
And chairman, if I have it down correctly, you're wishing to write to the CCG asking in no uncertain terms when the minor injuries unit is going to be reopening.
Thank you.
And that it reopens as soon as possible.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, is, is that, as you want, you said councillor Prowse?
Well, I said it with passion and that doesn't quite come over in an email.
I'm sure, I'm sure the wording will be open to interpretation, chairman.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know whether you put this in the proposal or when I actually put it in the letter. That it is an urgent need now.
Exactly.
Yes, it's, it's the urgency, it's not in October. We are going to have a lot of older, older holidaymakers. We've always had a lot in September into October. It's a, when the children go back to school, older people come down on holiday. We need the minor injuries unit now, not two months' time. So that's my proposal, is it is an urgent need now due to the circumstances of staycation, however you care to put that, Andrew.
Thank you councillor Prowse. And then that was seconded by councillor Wiggley, who's disappeared from the screen. But it's been, it's been seconded by councillor, also approved by councillor Louder. So can we now go to a vote, please? So can we now go to a vote, please? All those in favour, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, oh, sorry, and councillor Dawson.
Excellent, thank you. And councillor Dawson, would you like to vote, please?
Absolutely for it, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Is councillor Wiggley coming back?
I've not heard yet, chairman.
Okay, but he, he did say approval earlier on in the meeting. Okay, so that is, that carried, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, I believe councillor Dawson wishes to say something.
Councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
Sorry, just to clarify, Martin, councillor Wiggley is having problems with his internet. So that's why he had frozen and I believe disappeared.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So we have now come to the end of part one of our meeting, at which point I say thank you very much to all members of the public who've been watching live on Facebook and who've been with us during this meeting and all members of the press as well. We are now about to move into part two. So I ask, I say thank you and good evening to all members of the public and press. And we now ask you to leave us so that we can proceed into part two of the meeting. Thank you, Andrew.